Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, the meeting Thursday, November 12th, 2015. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment of silence, after which we'll turn the program over to Dr. Bracy. You may be seated. At this time, we'll turn the program over to Dr. Bracy. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeford. I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Glad to have you all with us this evening at our monthly board meeting. As if you look at your agenda, you'll see that we have with us tonight, New Directions Center will be featured tonight, and with that, we have with us during the Pledge of Allegiance, Diamond T. Radcliffe, and during the statement, Lucas S. Selfridge. If they would come down to the podium at this time, along with the principal, Mr. Lambert, and as they come, I will read a little background on each of the students. Diamond, she's currently attending New Directions Center, but she's a junior at Woodrow Wilson High School. She enjoys singing, writing, poetry, and watching television shows featuring law themes. She wants to become a lawyer so that she can be recognized as a strong voice for others. Diamond's parents are here with her tonight, Deidra and Darrell Hinton. And would Mr. and Mrs. Hinton please stand? Thank you very much. Next, we have Lucas James Selfridge. Lucas is currently attending New Directions, but he's enrolled as a junior at Woodrow Wilson High School. In his spare time, he pursues his interests in playing the guitar, surfing, and skating. He has a passion for caring for the animals on his grandparents' farm. He has an interest in attending Governor's School for the Arts. Upon graduation from high school, this 15-year-old wants to pursue a pre-law course of study before enrolling at Regent University, where he plans to earn a law degree. His goal is to become a successful civil defense attorney. He wants to be recognized as a voice of reason. He's the son of Jessica Selfridge Eason and Jean Le June. Fran and Jim Selfridge, his grandparents, are present tonight. Carlos Hooker is also here to support Lucas. Can we get all the support and family and grandparents standing at this time for Lucas? Thank you all, and thank you for joining us tonight, and welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge a few staff members from New Directions. Ms. Wiggins, Mrs. Brown, please stand. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
School board members, teachers and staff, family and friends, may you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated. Thank you.
Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Parent, school board members, Dr. Bracy, and special guests, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lucas Selfridge, and I'm a junior at the New Directions Center. Since I arrived at New Directions, I've found that it is easier to focus on my classwork, improve my behavior, and establish my goals. The New Directions Center is geared towards smaller classes and a safe and structured learning environment. The teachers provide individualized assistance to the learners, and they are very vigilant about keeping us on task. The teachers also help us, oh, the teachers help us daily with our academics, life skills, and decision-making. They also help us cope with issues we may be dealing with outside of school. I'm always motivated to do my best. The New Directions Center's mission is to deliver relevant instructional services and to provoke self-determination, responsibility, and integrity in a safe learning environment that fosters in each individual a sense of self-esteem and importance to society. Carl Barr said, "Though no one can go back and make a brand-new start, anyone can start from now and make a brand-new ending." Thank you, New Directions, for giving me my brand-new ending. Thank you for listening. Good night.
Hold on just a minute, Diamond and Lucas.
Diamond and Lucas, we want to, on behalf of the school board, we want to thank you for coming and joining us on this evening and for sharing with us, and I want to say first that I'm honored to shake your hand. And I want you to know that you are a gift to this city, and I want you to always remember to persevere through all that you may endure, never give up, never quit, and remember you're good enough for anything you want to achieve. Thank you again for coming.
Dr. Bracy?
Yes, as Diamond, as you and Lucas, before you all leave, I wanted to make a reference that tonight is probably the first night that we had two students come, both interested in being lawyers. So I think we're in good company tonight. So you all, both are juniors, you're both at Wilson, so in the next, what? Eight years? We look to see you on the other side paying your debt to society, and hopefully, you know, we'll all be on the right side of the law. But if we ever find ourselves in need of assistance, we know we have two fine students that we'll be able to call on. Thank you all so much.
Okay, we'll have the school board mission statement by Reverend Cardoia Patillo, a board member. Reverend Patillo?
Thank you. The mission of the Portsmouth Public Schools is to challenge their minds, challenge their bodies, and challenge their dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, next is attendance by electronic vote. Call your board members attention to the electronic roll. Please indicate your presence by voting electronically. Ms. Williams, do you want to retract that button that you just hit? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Seven members present, two members absent.
Okay, and they gave you reasons?
Reverend Fleming is out of town, and Mr. Nance asked that the following statement be read publicly. Many of you know that my wife of 35 years, Mickey, was recently diagnosed with breast cancer. We began a new chapter in this marathon against cancer in less than 24 hours. Mickey will receive her first chemotherapy treatment. I respectfully request that my fellow board members, the staff members, members of the audience, and employee group representatives try to understand my absence this evening and find it in their hearts to excuse me. I will be tending to my wife's needs to the best of my ability from this point until we figure out how well she tolerates these treatments. Once again, I hope that everyone understands. With warmest regards, I remain B. Keith Nance, Sr.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I've got lights on still. Did you remove them? Okay, thank you. Okay, I call the board's attention to the agenda. Board's pleasure. Moving properly, second that we approve the agenda. Board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, presentations. Presentation, Employee Group's Budget and Salary Request for the 2016-17 School Year. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Eva Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, Chairman Bradford, and Vice Chairman Parent, and other board members. My name is Eva Williams. I am representing the Instructional Assistance Advisory Board. I am here before you today to address the concerns of the instructional assistants. We would first like to thank you for the allotment we received for the spring break of 2014. We, as instructional assistants, feel that we should be compensated for holidays such as Thanksgiving, Veterans Day, and days we are not at Portsmouth Public Schools because they are closed, such as Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. In the past, when we were salary employees, we were paid for the above-mentioned days. There were no instructional assistants who were losing their homes or having to relocate their families due to lack of pay. Other schools in the Hampton Roads District pays $14,000 to $894, excuse me, $14,894 to $34,523.59. Instructional assistants at Portsmouth Public Schools are paid less than the surrounding districts. They are working full-time hours but are receiving property-level pay. As highly qualified instructional assistants, we perform a wide range of increasing duties, like testing students, hall duties, bus duties, and teaching as well as reinforcing individual students. Also, at some point, holding classes for the day when no substitutes are not available without any type of compensation. Not that we mind the task, but we feel that we should be compensated. Clearly, instructional assistants are not paid nearly enough for the insurmountable work that we do. Essentially, teachers and instructional assistants have many of the same duties and efforts to educate our children. We ask that you would consider and approve a budget that would include instructional assistants being paid for holidays or return to the salary system we once had to allow us to live above property level. Thank you for your continuous support and attention, Instructional Assistance Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Maitreel Hill.
Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chair, Parent, Superintendent, School Board Members, Teachers, Staff, we say good evening to you. Good evening. I'm standing on behalf of the custodial staff of PPS. I'm the head custodian at West Haven Elementary, and I'm standing to ask you for some things. Last physical school year is, we're coming to a close about the last physical school year, and we're embarking on a brand-new physical school year. So in this school year of 2016, we're asking for additional staffing. Our reason for asking for additional staffing is because our support staff system is low as of right now, and in order to keep our schools clean, sanitized, our grounds kept picked up, to be sure that our schools stay sanitized, we want more support staffing, just to be sure that our kids and our staff have a safe, clean environment to come to. And in that, we're asking also for more monetary gifts, not monetary gifts, but we're asking you for more, an increase in our pay. And our reason for asking for our increase in our pay because we feel we're loyal, we're dedicated, and we're very important to the city of Portsmouth as well as the school system. Not only that we don't, we leave our families during inclement weather, to shovel snow, to be sure that there's no leakage in our school, to make sure no floods. We're reporting to our media supervisors, but we're on-site as well, just to be sure that when our schools reopen, we make sure that our schools are ready for our staff and our students, to be sure that they have a safe and an environmental place to come to. So we're asking you, please, please, ma'am, please, sir, consider it, and thank you for your time, and my time is up.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Mr. Donnie White.
Dr. Bracy, school board members, assembled guests, and I'd like to recognize the Maintenance Department, and the staff who showed up, please. I'd like to bring your attention that we have an aging workforce. In the next two to four years, we have at least nine people who are eligible to retire. That's put a big dent in the Maintenance Department. Right now, the maintenance workforce consists of 20 people with one vacancy. 10 years ago, we had 40-plus people in our department. And the service crew and supply are currently staffed at six with 25 facilities they have to deliver to. With the decrease of workers over this 10-year span, our workload has greatly increased per technician and per worker. As stated, the 20 maintenance staff that we have, we have to maintain 2,350,900 fair square feet of building floor space and capacity, which brings it down to a little over 117,000 square feet per worker. That does not include roadways, parking lots, bus ramps, and school grounds. At present, our work orders are being maintained, but some in-house projects are being put on hold. There have been a few cases where some employees have to come in as much as two to three hours early, or have their work orders, or have their working hour shifted to do accomplished work when there's no students or staff inside the building. If a maintenance worker is sick or in leave, the rest of the work order still has to be executed and maintained, and I think we're doing a good job of it with what we have. What we're doing, we're requesting one maintenance worker per trade or skill level to bring us up to an acceptable level to get this work done that we're not behind, so we can say off for that. Anyway, when hiring, we are requesting funds for training programs for new employees or for those current maintenance staff who are seeking promotion. We request funding for renovation of our maintenance shop. More room is needed for testing and repairing equipment, space for specific machinery, for welding, and other functions needed in a specific time. In closing, we would like to know that our paychecks have not kept up with the cost of living. Some of our workers are supplementing jobs to make ends meet or receiving aid from the city. Finally, I would like to address the insurance package for those meeting the 30-50 rule. We request assistance from the school system to assist retirees who retire before the level at which they can apply for Medicare. We have employees who are currently working just for their insurance benefits. Do you have any questions? Is that what I have? Thank you for your time.
You have one question or statement. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I do have one question. When you had said here that some in-house projects have been put on hold, do you have any idea what kind of, how long a delay are we talking? Are we talking weeks, months?
It would depend upon the maintenance, because maintenance takes first priority over an in-house project unless it's an important project, but I don't have a direct answer to your question.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Katie Vincent?
Good evening, Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chair Parent, Board Members, Dr. Bracy. My name is Katie Vincent, and I'm the president of the Portsmouth Education Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of our members. Our first request is for 3% adjustment and additional staff on the salary scale for all employees. We strongly urge you to begin the raise and adjustment beginning July 1, 2016. As you may be aware, the delay of implementation for this year's increase in Portsmouth employees has put us behind surrounding school districts who realize their raises for the entire school year. That has been a demoralizing factor for your staff. Second, we are very concerned about continued large class sizes in many of our buildings. We certainly are within the maximum numbers set by the Virginia Department of Education, but our teachers are challenged to meet the needs of 30 or more students in large classrooms. We recognize a significant loss of state funds has dictated that we lose classroom teachers, but we must begin to reverse this trend. Class size is the key component in predicting student success. We also urge you to fully staff our kindergarten classrooms with instructional assistants. Sharing one position between five classes severely limits the impact professionals can have on our young learners. Sharing and assistance part of the day diminishes the importance of work. We request materials to support the Daily Five program be purchased for all grades that are directed and implemented in the reading program. Each classroom is supposed to have 1,000 books for use by the students. There aren't enough books in the school libraries to support this program, and the Portsmouth Public Library will not allow teachers to check out 30 books per week to keep the center supported with the reading options that are supported to be in place. If Daily Five is going to be our reading model, then the components of the program must be purchased. Teachers can't afford to purchase them out of their own pocket. Our elementary members want to thank the board members for supporting and hiring lunchroom monitors to provide supervision in the cafeteria, so the teachers are relieved of their duty. We look forward to the individuals being placed, provided this coverage, and hope it will be very soon. We anxiously follow the progress since it was announced early in October to keep us hoping and keep us hoping to see and put into practice. As always, PEA pledged to work with you to bring our concerns to Delegate James Heritage, as well as Senator Lucas, and lobby, whom we are in Richmond or here at home. Our active lobbying efforts have made many differences in the votes over the years, and you will continue to work. We certainly look forward for the day when significant additional funds is available from the state. Let's make it be this year. Thank you.
All right, hold tight just a moment. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I do have a question, and maybe Dr. Taylor could also help with this if need be. You had said here that each classroom is supposed to have 1,000 books for the Daily Five literacy program. My question is, 1,000 books, is that, I mean, is that the library and classroom libraries, or are these more of the paper books for the program, or what exactly is this?
They are, they are thin paper books, and we recently purchased a number of books for each school. We spent over $3,000 per school providing additional supplements for the Daily Five program, and I don't know if those have been delivered to all of the schools, but I know that we have received them, and our program specialist for pre-K is in the process of delivering those books to the schools. So they're basically leveled readers that the teachers can use for the students to engage in independent reading or read to self or read to others, because there are different phases of the program.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I just wanted an update for Ms. Vincent and the others to know about the coverage for the lunches, for the teachers to have their breaks.
Yes, we have, the information has been sent out to the principals, and at this time, we are waiting on the principals to determine or designate who they want to have as their monitor for the lunchroom. But that's already been clearly articulated to the schools, and my asking, my senior staff in the meetings, the funding is there, we've already sent the information out, we're just waiting on the principals for those that haven't to make that decision.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you again, Chairman Bridgeford. With regards to, and maybe this is more of a Mr. Steele question more than anything else. With regards to the other two speakers, Mr. Hill and Ms. Williams, you know, it was stated here about the pay of instructional assistants, and there was a range that was given here. I thought we fell within that range. Do we or do we not? That's the first question. My second question would be for, with regards to Mr. Hill, head custodian, asking for additional staffing. Are we, are we very low in our custodian staff, or is that something you'd have to get back with us?
I can get back to you with specifics, but that's one of the things we look at in the upcoming budget cycle. We have looked at the state reporting from different districts around the state as far as instructional assistants, and there's a lot of factors that go into it, including things like holidays and whether you're paid or not. But right now, it looks like we're below the median, but we're not the lowest in the area. As far as custodians, there are some benchmarks out there. Look at school districts and the amount of square footage that is normally assigned per custodian. And again, we're probably well within the limits that are defined by the Council of Great City Schools and looking at other urban school districts on how much square footage is assigned per custodian, and also other standards that have been put out by the National Center for Education Statistics. But again, there's, just straight square footage is not necessarily a complete measure. You've got to look at other factors, what other duties they may be assigned, how they supplement the maintenance force, et cetera. So there's a lot of factors that go into that, in addition to not just straight salary, but also holiday pay and how much resources you're putting into the custodial function.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steele. Mr. Parent?
This question is for Mr. White, and just help me, is there a difference in the building engineer, we have a building engineer for each of our schools, or we have a head custodian? Because I remember, and I remember you, Mr. White, a long time ago, you, a lot of times at Church Academy, but there was always a building engineer, and then there were custodial staff. And so when I listened to Steele talk about the custodial staff having to come and shovel snow, I always remember that the building engineer always came in, did that. So do we have building engineers anymore, or we have custodial staff?
No, we do not have building engineers anymore.
So they're gone?
They're gone. They left about 10 years ago.
Oh, well, that's when I left, well.
Yeah, and even then, they would have fallen under the custodial department and not Maintenance Department.
But some of the jobs that you have within the school, the custodial staff, they can't fix some of the issues at school, some of the minor issues that would reduce some of your... some of the minor issues that, that would reduce some of your work requests?
They could, but under the old regime, that was taken away from the head custodians. It was put on the maintenance staff to make the repairs. And I'm not talking about y'all.
So.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you want to do additional information.
No, I'll get, I'll get some different.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White. Dr. Wood.
Well, I should have, can you come back up please? Because my question is for you as well, for maintenance. I had a question, the issue that you brought up about the Medicare coverage or the way in which you're covered by the health insurance. Could you explain that in a little bit more detail? Because I wasn't exactly clear on what you were saying there.
It is my understanding, and you can have check that's given resources on that, when a person retires after 30 years, they give them $2,500 towards insurance. I don't know if that's still standable or not. But it was my understanding what happens at that point. So we have a lot of people, see, our workforce is aging. They can retire in two to four years. And there's going to be a big gap anywhere from eight to 10 years until they start drawing Medicare.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If that's a question, that's something you should be taking up with Human Resources to make sure the benefits that you would be entitled to. Okay, I understand we have another speaker that signed up late. I might have to see where this goes before I cut you out. You don't want to do it? Okay. He says no, Kathy.
He doesn't want to speak?
No.
Okay.
Okay, because this was for employer groups. Okay, is that it? Kathy, do we have anyone? That's it? Okay, thank you. Okay, recognition of school attendance, October 2015. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bridford. At this time, we will call on Mr. Joseph Wiggins as he comes to us and delivers this information in his own way.
I'm sure you said that so I couldn't say that you told me to say all of this. But I will simply remind you that we're always a month behind and that we do not require the principals to haul those banners in. If they want them September and they're up, they can keep them up until they don't. So that's why we will not be representing banners tonight. But I have the monthly attendance report for October 2015. Overall, the school division experienced a slight decline of 1 and 6 hundredths of a percentage point in student attendance for October 2015. And again, we are comparing the statistics for 2014 with 2015. Our preschools and, okay, for 2014, it was 95.55%, and for the current year, 94.49%, reflecting a decline of 1.06%. When we take a look at our preschool centers, we know that the percentage of student attendance dipped from the previous year by 1 and 15 hundredths of a percentage point. For 2014, it was 94.12%. For the current year, 92.97%. Taking first place honors for the second time is Mount Herman Preschool. Okay. The principal is in, in class. And some of the principals told me that they were not going to be climbing up on the ladder to take down the banner to bring it back. So I said, hey, I can go along with that. But Mount Herman Preschool came in first place with 94.18%. This is the second time taking first place. And Churchton Preschool had 93.82%. And again, this is the second time for, for Churchton Preschool. Since I'm nearing 30, last month, the principal at Churchton Primary was here. Our preschool was here, but I did not see her. But anyway, we move next to, and again, the difference separating the first place and second place winners for the preschools is 36 hundredths of a percentage point. Quite close. We next move to the elementary schools. For 2014, it was 96.54%. For the current year, 95.48%. And again, it reflects a, a slight decline of 1 and 6 hundredths of a percentage point. Coming in for the second time with first place is Churchton Primary with 97.11%. The principal is not here, but representing the school is Ms. Tamara Datkins. Churchton Elementary School came in first, second place this time with 96.76%. And this is the first time. And again, the difference between the first place and second place winners is 35 hundredths of a percentage point. We move next to our middle schools. And again, we experienced a slight drop in student attendance for last month. It was a drop of 1 and 54 hundredths of a percentage point. For 2014, it was 95.72%. For the current year, it's 94.18%. Taking first place honors for the second time is Churchton Middle School with 94.69%. The principal is here, Ms. Barbara Kenzler. Coming in second place is Waters Middle School. And this is the first time the current year with 94.13%. And the difference between the first place and second place winner is 56 hundredths of a percentage point. We move next to the high schools. And while all the other divisions had a decline, the high schools had an increase of 20, I'm sorry, of 2.57, an increase of 2.57%. For last year, it was 92.99%. And for the current year, 95.56%. Once again, Churchton High School took first place honors with 97.11%. I believe the Assistant Principal, Anna Maria Incomidius, is here. And taking second place honors for the second time is Woodrow Gosling with 90.46%. When we look at it, at the figures, the high school seems to be moving up. The greatest percentage of increase occurred at the high school level with 6.65 percentage points. I'm sorry, the difference separating the first and second place winners is 6 and 65 hundredths of a percentage point. The last slide simply shows the figures for the division, the preschools, the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And again, we extend our sincere and heartfelt appreciation to everyone involved, excuse me, involved in all important tasks of getting students to school. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Next item on the agenda is electronic vote for the minutes of October 8, 2015, and October 22, 2015. Board's pleasure. The mood improper second that we adopt the minutes is given. Any corrections and any further discussion? If not, board members please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, next item is public comment discussion, public comment knowledge agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes. The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Ms. Shay Pepper?
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, and all the other school members, as well as those assembled in the audience. My name is Shay Pepper. I'm a resident of Portsmouth and the Executive Director of Global Youth Action Incorporated. I'm also the Chair of the Portsmouth Coalition for Youth and the Secretary for the Healthy Portsmouth Coalition. I'm here to talk to you tonight about Global Youth Action Incorporated, which is the nonprofit that I started. It became incorporated in 2013. It became a registered nonprofit in 2014. And after three and a half years of serving our fine city with behavioral healthcare services, I was in a position to go ahead and begin to start my own work here in the city in July of 2015. So since then, we have been doing quite a few things. You have a document in front of you that's our mini-report. That was printed about a month ago and already we have updates to it. So I'm going to tell you just a little bit, just to give you an overview of that. And then I'll go ahead and tell you more about why I'm really here this evening. We started doing group mentoring this summer. We also provide individual mentoring. We started a social enterprise that provides young people with paid work experience and workplace mentoring. It also provides them with classroom education in career success and personal finance provided by Junior Achievement. We ended up providing $600 in paid work experience to young people this summer over the course of eight weeks. Normally, it's a 90-day program. But as we started in July, we went ahead and finished it up once the school year started. They finished on Sunday before school started on Tuesday. And we also are doing fundraising right now for our One Sound program. A young woman who grew up here in Portsmouth, learning steel pans, approached us and is very interested in starting a steel pan orchestra. So we will be doing some fundraising for that. We are also doing African drum and dance with her program. So that's the One Sound program. And we're really looking forward to what we're going to be doing with that. Additionally, you may have seen little free libraries in Parkview, Port Norfolk, and Old Town. Those have been provided through different community members. And the Friends of the Portsmouth Library approached us and said, we'd like you to get teens to build some more. So so far, in partnership with the HIRR Shelter, we've built three little free libraries. And in just over a week, we'll be building three more with another small nonprofit that works with youth called Circle of Youth here in the city. And we also have our first person who's taken one of our free libraries, which is actually the Portsmouth Library Museum over on Elm Avenue next to the Elm Avenue Parks and Recreation Center. So you'll see a library go up there in the new year with a light blue roof that was provided by the young people from the HIRR Shelter, Department of Social Services, and also other teens that we're working with. We have current partners include the Friends of the Portsmouth Library, Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the HIRR Shelter, and the Portsmouth Health Department. Although an exhaustive list of our business and community partners can be found on our website at globalyouthaction.org. So the mini-report will give you a little bit more information about what we've been doing. But since that report started, we have a few other things that have happened. I'm going to have to talk quickly because I'm already too excited and I've already talked about too much other stuff. So really exciting. The hub of our work is a youth cafe. And we have been able to partner with a local restaurant and church to provide a space. So Divine Dining, it can be found on County Street with the Divine Deliverance Christian Center Church, closes their doors early on Tuesdays to allow us to open up at 2:15 for young people in the city of Portsmouth to come and have somewhere to hang out. We play music, we have video games, we have board games, we have snacks that are priced for a young person's pocket. So far, all of our snacks are under a dollar in terms of what they can purchase and how much it costs. And we got that started two weeks ago. We're having an official three-month trial starting in January, which will actually be on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturday afternoons. And we are within sight of IC Norcom High School. So our goal is obviously to focus on those young people who are within that walking zone around IC Norcom and provide a safe and fun place for them to hang out. We're also working with the Health Department on providing a sexual health clinic for teens. So they're not going and accessing those services where we want them to be. So we're going to bring those services to them. So one way or another, we're going to help our teens get the services that they need. So we have that going on. And then we also, the gentleman that I wanted to speak to you all, but unfortunately, his visit didn't coincide, is Jason Royce from Romance Academy UK. That is a healthy relationships curriculum that I would love to talk to you all more about. It's not your parent sex ed. It's not here's a condom, here's how to put it on. It's not do it, don't do it. It is a much broader program that looks at good decision-making, healthy relationships, and how we can change the long-term outcomes for our young people.
You want to wrap it up?
Yes, sir, 10 seconds, I'm ready. All right. So I just wanted to thank you very much for the opportunity to share about GYA. We're looking forward to expanding beyond our current partners in the city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. No lights. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Roderick Madison?
Good evening, Dr. Bracy. And board chair members, my name is Roderick Madison. I have with me Chris Westerman. We're here representing the Left Core Alumni Association. Through Dr. Bracy and Mr. Steele and Mr. Robinson, we created a partnership to where on November 21, at 8:30 a.m., we're going to be spreading mulch at eight of the elementary schools here in Portsmouth. We're going to start at Churchton Primary intermediate, which is a big task. We're going to move the mulch from the spot where they dumped it to the three areas at Churchton Primary. From there, we're going to move to other schools separately and spread the mulch. So we invite you all to come out and help. We invite the citizens to come out and help. Any help would always be needed. Right now, I think we have roughly 20 volunteers through the Left Core Alumni Association and other networks. So again, thank you, Dr. Bracy, for setting that partnership up. And Left Core Alumni Association is here to support the school system. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Donna Sa.
Good evening. My name is Donna Sa and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 24, a free people will not survive unless they stay strong. The definition of strong is having a great force or power of, powers of mind, of intellect, or of any faculty as a man of strong memory, judgment, or imagination. Therefore, the mission of education is to educate students to become productive citizens by challenging them to use their mind, by exercising their memory, their intellect, their imagination, and their good judgment to maintain our liberty so our city, state, and nation stays strong. Learning is all about the powers of the mind to absorb knowledge, to communicate. A person's leadership ability is all about how he or she can use his or her knowledge to communicate effectively to get a job done. What I have experienced with the elected of city council and the school board is neglect and apathy towards the people. In other words, they are failing to communicate with we the people. Here are two examples of neglect and apathy by the elected on the school board. On June 25, I gave a presentation to the school board on Principles of Liberty. With that presentation, I gave a petition that were signed by a number of citizens requesting a policy that directs the superintendent of the school division to create an organizational chart with lines of authority and an income and expense statement for the year 2014-15, which is still unfulfilled. On September 24, I gave a presentation to the school board on Principles of Liberty 26. With the presentation, I gave petitions that were signed by a number of citizens requesting a policy that would direct the superintendent of the school division to provide funding for a whole school change program to teach students how to resolve their own conflict issues to prevent having to... issues to prevent having to become a member of an addiction support group late in life to learn about their needs and pro-social behaviors. Tonight, I have petitions signed by we the people. For fear of retaliation, the names on this petition will be kept anonymous. The petition states that we want the school board to create a policy to authorize reporting of the incidence of discipline, crime, and violence that is occurring in these schools at one of the school board meetings monthly by the Discipline, Crime, and Violence Coordinator. This knowledge will keep us informed about incidents occurring in the schools, how the discipline is carried out, and is it effective? The whole-school change program would be proactive in preventing inappropriate behaviors in children and youth. One of the founding fathers, Samuel Adams, emphasized the moral responsibility and duty of Americans to preserve the heritage of liberty and our unalienable rights. He said that once these blessings have been given to a human being, he felt it was wicked and unnatural thing to allow those great fruits of liberty to be languished by neglect and apathy. When individuals combine into a society, they bring all of their natural rights with them. Under no circumstances must these natural rights be allowed to dwindle away. Here is what Adams, Samuel Adams, said. His greatest absurdity to support it would be, in the power of one or any number of men at the entering into society to renounce their essential natural rights or the means of preserving those rights, when the grand end of civil government, from the very nature of its institution, is for the support, protection, and defense of those very rights, the principles of which are life, liberty, and property. If men through fear, fraud, or mistake should in terms renounce or give up any essential natural rights, the eternal law of reason and the grand end of society would not allow this to occur. The right to liberty being given by God Almighty, it is not in the power of man to adelinate this gift and voluntary become a slave. Our school's responsibility is to communicate these principles to our students so that America can stay strong. Sad to say, our schools are no longer educating our young to be good citizens. Look at our city, state, and federal governments. We the people are no longer the government. Our liberty has been taken away from us. Our schools and churches are to blame. Thanks for listening.
Seeing no requests to speak, uh, do we have any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mark Edoldik Yetravsky.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of the School Board, and fellow citizens. President Obama, to his credit, in his second inaugural address noted that, in America, freedom of religion also entails freedom from religion. And as a public body, this school board has done a better job than any other public body in the Commonwealth in terms of trying to walk the line between free exercise and enforced exercise. Several years ago, you changed your opening, um, your meeting opening so that there was a moment of silence, which is a neutral, a religion-neutral sort of observance. And that is in accordance with a mandate from the Virginia General Assembly. Now, when a teacher came here several weeks ago and expressed a concern about a religious, uh, invocation at a, an in-service or training that she was required to attend, that stirred a, a fair amount of discussion within the board and in the community. I applaud her for expressing those concerns because in my, in my theology, my personal theology, there is no such thing as an ecumenical prayer. And certainly, if you close your prayer with, "In Jesus' name we pray," you have gone a long way from ecumenical. There are two other religions, um, in this world that reference the same god as the Christians, the god of the Jews and the god of the Muslims. And neither of those religions would find praying in Jesus' name consistent with their religious beliefs. In the world at large, there are more people who adhere to religions that are unlike those three than there are who practice those three. And so, Jesus has no relevance to them either. Then, of course, there are the nonbelievers. And so, in showing sensitivity to the diversity of our community, diversity goes beyond skin pigmentation. It includes religion, culture, customs. So, in, in showing appropriate respect to the diversity of our community in its broadest sense, it is important that any sort of commingling of secular and religious practice be held to a bare minimum. I read in the paper yesterday that you all are contemplating a change to your policies and procedures, and based on the account in the paper, I feel that you are going in the correct direction. I hope that you will go as reported. There was a comment from one board member about what city council does in this chamber. Although the Supreme Court does allow them to do what they do, leadership is not about doing what everybody else does. Leadership is finding a path that satisfies the needs of the community based on its merits. I hope you will show, continue to show leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yetravsky. Any, no requests to speak? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Ty Muttlow.
Good evening, Mr. Bridgeford.
Good evening.
Mr. Parent, Dr. Bracy, and the rest of our board. Like to say thanks. It's nice to see something nice in the news.
He wants you to speak into your mic.
It's nice to see something in the news that's positive. Our schools are improving little bit by little bit, hard work. Secondly, our VEX program, yes, we sent four teams up to Potomac to participate. Only one of them got to qualify out of Churchland, but on the 21st of November, Wilson will be holding our annual competition down here. Uh, I hope all you can come and watch, hope we can get some more teams qualified to go to state. Lastly, I'm a little offended as a citizen, as a taxpayer, to have people requesting money. I wish everyone could get paid the same and get paid a lot. It's not economically feasible at this time. If you haven't heard the rumblings, the money's coming down this year. We're gonna be in worse shape budgetally than we were this last year. You know, I'm sorry for everybody that wants more money. It's a job. If you don't like your pay, you don't like your benefits, there's other opportunities. I, I'm sorry to have to say that, but we not gonna have the money this year to do what everyone wants. There's gonna be some very difficult choices for you guys again this year. I don't applaud you, and I wouldn't wanna sit in your chairs. But at some point, I'm a citizen, I'm a taxpayer like everyone else, but this school system is a business to me. You are paid to educate my child at the best that you can do. I can't support everybody. But ultimately, whether you're shorthanded, don't like what you pay, our children come first. Before I cut anything in this, out of our school budget that affects these kids, you know, I, I, I feel bad for everybody. But we can't appease everyone, and we can't pay everyone what they deserve. And to compare us to Virginia Beach, you know, our economics is not the same as Virginia Beach. As a matter of fact, if you watch the news, they're getting cut pretty big this year too. Chesapeake's, I think, 12 million in the hole already. That's before the final budgets come down. It's frustrating me as a citizen. You know, I didn't get a pay raise this year. My health insurance went up. I get to pay for it. I mean, I, I, I feel so, I feel bad for, I feel bad for you guys, but this budget, based upon what I'm hearing at city council and what I'm hearing from outside individuals, this budget shortfall is gonna be ugly. Good luck.
All right, thank you, Mr. Muttlow. Any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
No. If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next section's Curriculum Instruction Monthly Report, Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Anita Taylor, Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Bracy?
Dr. Taylor will present.
I don't know if you heard her say before she starts talking.
Well, she's gonna share all the wonderful things happening in Curriculum Instruction with us tonight.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Parent, and members of the school board. Thank you for this opportunity to share a few highlights from the many activities and events, and events that we've held this month in Curriculum Instruction. In the Office of English, I want to report that one of our teachers, Catherine McGeehee, and our program specialist, Anna Cross, had the opportunity to meet Mr. Cornelius Eady, who is one of the poets featured in Apprentice Hall literature, uh, literature books. Uh, they met him at the 38th Annual ODU Literacy Festival, Literary Festival. In Mathematics, our own math specialist, India Hatcher Watkins, has been awarded a Portsmouth Schools Foundation's Innovator Grant, and this grant will enable her to purchase WES that will be used for gaming, to collect, graph, interpret, and create an application of ratio and percent with her students. From the Office of Science, we have several students who attended the VEX Robotics Competition and we, and Williams, in McLean, Virginia, on October 31st. From Woodrow Wilson, we had Joshua Riddle, Joshua Woodworth, Moki Edwards, Jordan Muttlow, Hassan Robinson, and Dominic Mason. From Churchland High School, we had Barbara Toussaint, Ray Smith, James Trail, Joe Sawyer, Jacob Wells, Patrick Mines, and Hunter Mines, and they were accompanied by their coaches, Lawrence Douglas and Daniel Morgan. From the Office of Social Studies, we want to advise you that the third-grade pacing guides have been revised, as have the ones for US History I and US History II. The Social Studies Specialist and one middle school, uh, math, one middle school teacher from each school attended the Civic Summit in Richmond, I believe that was today, and they were there actually with Board Member Hines. From the Office of Special Programs, the pre-K office is preparing to do transition visits and tours with our feeder schools, and these will actually take place in March and April, but the teams are working very diligently to make sure that this is a rich experience for our students. A parent advisory meeting, meeting for pre-K is scheduled for November 16th, and the Steering Committee meeting is scheduled for November 18th. The 2015-16 Title I grant has been revised and resubmitted to the state, and we are awaiting final approval on that, which I believe we might have gotten, um, that end this week. Federal monitoring will occur during 2015-16, and we are already preparing for that. We're organizing committees and outlining the requirements that the state is asking us to have for them. The exact date of the onsite visit has not been determined, but we should hear that sometime this month. Sharon Moore, Supervisor for Health and Physical Education, coordinated a Virginia Department of Education, Virginia Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance SOL workshop at ODU on Saturday, November 7th. She presented an SOL overview session, as well as a session on lesson planning. The first round of observations and walkthroughs have taken place for our academic review. Our VDOE consultant is Dr. Lucia Sebastian, and she is collaborating with our staff to conduct the observations during the months of November and December. I believe today, uh, the staff was at West Haven and Churchland Middle School. And tomorrow, they'll be at Waters and Parkview Elementary School. Ms. Pamela Battle-Harty is serving as, as an interim Special Education Coordinator after the retirement of our own Mrs. Ellen Giordano. Our school improvement meetings, uh, we are very pleased to say that our first entire round of, of school improvement meetings has been completed, and we were able to meet with 24 schools. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Hines?
Good evening, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Dr. Taylor, how are you? It was fun to be in Richmond today, to sit with, um, the current superintendent, Dr. Staples, um, the president of the Board of Education, Dr. Kennedy, and the First Lady and the, and the governor, so I know your staff had a, will, had a very enriching time to, and really to hear, um, what the state of civics education and government education is gonna be over the next few years. So, we had lunch together, and I, when you worked with them and you do the same thing that they do, the conversation just comes easily. So, they were there and excited. Um, I had a couple of questions. Number one, the transition program for pre-K. You said for the students. Are we planning anything for parents as well to go from pre-K into kindergarten?
Yes, we are. We're holding a number of parent workshops. We are really strengthening our parent outreach this year and making sure that we hold not only just the designated or the required for parent workshops, but also working with parents to transition them as well as their children into the kindergarten programs. We're hoping to start the preregistration or registration process much earlier so that we will have an opportunity, um, to work with parents at, you know, earlier into the process.
And you led me into my next question, so great minds think alike tonight. Are we looking at doing kindergarten registrations off-site at, um, in, in neighborhoods or in, in places that the parents can get to more easily? Because when you go to an elementary school, the first day of school, the, the registration line is still.
Right.
It's still lengthy.
Yeah.
And, um, so just to help ease that transition and ease the, the parent end of trying to get their students registered for school so that, that first day is not paperwork and waiting, and we miss out on everything, and, you know, the whole first day is.
Well, we noticed this year from the data that we gathered that we had a number of parents, not just kindergarten, but, but K6, who, um, for some reason or another, waited until the first day of school to register their children. We're gonna make every opportunity this year to provide other venues for parents, perhaps looking at the public libraries, perhaps looking at our Social Services Department, so that we can encourage parents to go ahead and register their children early, which would not only make it better for the students on the first day of class, but the parents as well, but also help the schools to operate more smoothly. So, my staff is working, and I know that the Office of Special Programs is working, and the kindergarten, um, folks are working with principals to try to figure out ways that we can get parents to register early.
As a parent of a kindergartner for next year, I'll be looking for those dates.
All right.
The next piece is with Title I, and we have the Title I parent support. Where do parents learn what support the schools can give them through Title I? Is it listed on a website somewhere? What support is available for parents through Title I? And I think maybe, I don't know where to look for that, and so.
Right. We're, we're in the process of updating our websites, but we try to disseminate that information through the schools as much as possible. We have two parent outreach, um, I guess they're specialists, you would say. That's not their title, but they basically focus on parent outreach, and they work directly with parents, and they hold, um, uh, parent sessions where they can come in and ask questions, and we disseminate information through, I guess, the schools newsletters and things of that nature. As we update our website, what I would like to see is for us to have that information available on the web and to have strategic places throughout our school division where we. we post that information for those parents who might not necessarily have access to email or to, to internet. So, we will definitely strengthen that process.
And one last question. You mentioned the math specialist with the WEE math. I would learn that way, math that way.
Yes.
Do we have a total amount of awards from the Innovator Grants that the Portsmouth Education Foundation awarded? Do we have a total number of what they gave or a list of recipients of that grant?
I don't have that available tonight, but I can make that available for you. I'm sure that we can contact them and compile that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, seeing no, no other requests. Do you have the next one, the new state accreditation ratings? Dr. Bracy?
Yes, Mr. Nottingham is gonna share with us the, the new ratings that were, that are in effect for this school year.
Okay.
Chairman Bridgeford. Vice Chair, Mr. Perrin. Superintendent Dr. Bracy. School Board members and others assembled, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I bring before you, for your discussion results of the new 2015 accreditation ratings. Before moving into the meat of the presentation, I wanted to make a note that this year marks the first time in the history of Virginia's education that the Governor, State School Board, State Superintendent have been on one accord with respect to the future of Virginia's educational system. Following many discussions with citizens and educators, it was felt that teachers might be losing their passion and that we might be the cause of that. To reignite that passion means moving away from the more punitive measures of putting more, and putting more supportive structures in place. With that in mind, the Virginia School Board proposed to the General Assembly, House Bill 1873, Senate Bill 1320, introducing levels of accreditation. Those measures were approved in October, and the new ratings were established. In an effort to be less punitive and more supportive to schools, the administration wanted to recognize the progress of schools and student growth. They wanted to be able to differentiate between schools too close and showing positive trends, as well as schools falling behind and nowhere near the requirement. They wanted to recognize improvement, they also wanted to be able to better align professional development and supports, and wanted to be able to identify schools better that were likely to make it, and schools that were in need of more direction and more support. The ratings of schools too close or making progress, the new ratings are as follows. Still, we have the fully accredited rating, which is the 75 for English and the 70% for the other three core areas, and if it's a high school, 85% for the graduation completion index. To receive a partially accredited, approaching benchmark pass rate, a school must meet the core areas, or the scores must fall within the narrow margin of two points, and one point for the graduation completion index. For a school to achieve a rating, a partially accredited improving school-pass rate, school must demonstrate sufficient improvement. Sufficient improvement is based upon increases over the previous year's, um, scores or ratings. Sufficient improvement can range from three points or higher, or at the higher end, to 15 points of scores at the low end. Partially accredited, one schools. This rating is achieved when schools do not meet the requirements of full accreditation, or they do not meet the narrow margin criteria, or they have not demonstrated sufficient improvement as compared to the previous year's rating or scores. And as for the schools to receive a partially accredited reconstituted, they have to be not fully accredited for a consecutive four years. So, with that in mind, this is how the results pan out for the Portsmouth Public School System. We've already discussed the 11 schools that have achieved fully accreditation over the summer. We have two schools that will be partially accredited improving, Parkview and John Tyler, and we have four schools partially accredited, one, Brighton Douglas Park, West Haven, and Waters Middle School, and we have two schools that have not been determined at this time, Churchland Middle and Craddock Middle, and at this time, we have no schools reconstituted. And again, I thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Perrin?
Could you elaborate? Because when that came out in the paper, "to be determined," what does that mean? I mean, what are they waiting, what are they waiting on?
I'm not sure what they're waiting on. It might be that these schools may have to do the school improvement plan and go to the State School Board to present that plan to them. That might be part of that process. We just haven't been informed yet.
So, the Board, the State Board of Education is determining, is going to determine what action they're.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, no other questions? Thank you. Okay, next item, we're going to Human Resources, Monthly Report, Human Resources, Mr. Scott Ziegler, Director. Dr. Bracy, any words?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ziegler's gonna present this, this month. As, as you can imagine, HR is sort of slowing down a bit now that we're getting into the thick of the years for staffing, so his agenda tonight is not as long as it usually is. Mr. Ziegler?
Thank you. I don't know if I'm gonna testify that we're slowing down, though. There's always plenty to do. Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Perrin, members of the Board, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. The Department of Human Resources would like to welcome a new staffing specialist, Crystal Satchel, to the Division. Ms. Satchel comes to us by the way of St. Bride's Correctional Center, where she served as HR Manager. Prior to her tenure at St. Bride's, Ms. Satchel was the HR Specialist with the Isle of Wight Public Schools. Ms. Satchel began her transition here on November the 2nd and will begin, be here with us permanently, beginning on November 16th. If you're in the Department of Human Resources, please stop by and introduce yourself. Senior Supervisor Jessica Duran attended a Virginia Retirement System Roundtable on November 4th. The discussion topics included the VRS Hybrid Retirement Plan, the Virginia Local Disability Program, and working after retirement to fill needs in critical shortage areas. Compliance Officer Danielle Jarvis led a roundtable discussion with middle and high school principals focusing on the issues of discrimination, harassment, gender equity, gender identif, and identification, gender expression, and sexual orientation. Ms. Jarvis provided helpful information to principals on investigating and responding to complaints or issues with these subjects in their buildings. And finally, as I mentioned in my last report, the department has begun an initiative to provide on-demand video training on a variety of topics for Division personnel. The first video is live and available for viewing. If you're interested and maybe having trouble sleeping, you can view the first video at the link provided in the written report.
Okay, thank you. And no, no requests? Okay. Uh, next item is Employee Transaction Report and Addendum for November 2015. Any comments on that? If not, then Board's pleasure, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I need to kind of explain where I'm gonna go with this, with my vote.
Okay, can we do this? Let me get it on the table first.
I thought, okay.
Yeah, let, let, let me get a motion and a, so we can have a discussion. Board's pleasure.
Move for approval, second.
Okay, it's moved probably second that we adopt a transition, uh, transaction register along with the addendum as given by Administration. Now, Mr. Lamb, further discussion.
Okay, apologize for that.
That's okay, I apologize. I thought you were gonna make the motion.
No, no, I'm sorry. No, actually, I, I just wanted to explain how, the reason why I'm just gonna vote, the way I was gonna vote this evening, and it really goes back to the last budget cycle. At that time, we had submitted the budget to City Council, and then we provided a final budget as well. I voted no on both of those accounts because of, there was an addition of administration positions. This evening, I will be voting no again for the same reasons with regards to the Employee Transaction Report as well. I think that we need to, the, the position at, at, in question here, the candidate is very highly qualified, no, no doubt about it, but I do believe that we started down a journey of making sure that we had instructional assistance in each of our, in our classes, and we haven't completed that yet. We've also heard some concerns tonight with different departments and so forth, from resources to so forth, that I just think that, right now, where we are at, it's not a time to be adding an administrative position of this caliber. So, I will be voting no.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, if not, you're voting on the Human Resources Report. Board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
Five yes votes, two no, it passes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Budget and Planning, 9.1 Monthly Report, Budget and Planning, Ms. Christopher P. Steele, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bracy, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. I can't, I can't say that, um, Mr. Steele's report is, is shorter this month with the number of errors that, that fall under his guidance. So, Mr. Steele, we'll let you go ahead and get started so you can get through it.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Mr. Bridgeford, Mr. Perrin, rest of the School Board members, good evening. In the Budget and Planning Monthly Report, I have a few areas I want to talk about. The first one is, we did receive, um, acknowledgement from the Government Finance Officers Association. Following an examination by an independent panel of reviewers, they presented us with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the Portsmouth City School Board, Virginia, for its annual budget document for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015. So, that's the budget document we're working on right now. In order to receive this award, a governmental unit must publish a budget document that meets program criteria as a policy document, as an operations guide, as a financial plan, and as a communications device. This is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. We received a plaque and a copy of the certificate is shown here and is in this binder. Next item for purchasing, there's some items of note. One is that the next meeting of the School Board, MWB Advisory Committee, will be tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Nadine Wassman participated on an evaluation committee for, with Chesapeake Public Schools to assist in evaluating proposals for alcohol and drug testing services, and we received bids and quotes, October 29th, for food service equipment, which are being evaluated for award. Also, the Purchasing Office participated in the Virginia Beach Minority Business Council 20th Anniversary Conference Expo and Luncheon held on Thursday, November 5th. We participated along with the City and Transformation Consultants. And Kathy Dietz-Beyer successfully committed, or completed, the NIGP webinar titled "The Scoop on Scope Specs and Minimums and Backgrounds." And again, this is, uh, just one of several professional development initiatives and, and items that were increasing for all the buyers. On the information technology front, we did change to a new time and attendance system. We were using a system, you may recall the name Legent, and that was, that company was taken over by a company named Asur, and so, we're upgrading to that new system. And the new system will be cloud-based instead of based on our network. It'll provide greater functionability, a new and improved interface, and take advantage of the new time clocks that were installed in every building last spring to improve reliability. The major milestones of the project included online training with the dates indicated there, and starting, I believe it was this week, all new staff were enrolled in the system, so they're currently clocking in on the new system right now. The first payroll processing run using the new system will occur on the November 23rd payday, uh, on December 4th. An update on the infrastructure upgrades in the middle and high schools. The wiring installation of access points has moved to the middle schools, beginning with Churchland Middle, and Churchland Middle will be completed by, hopefully it was yesterday. And everything, as far as I know, is on track. In the high schools, the new equipment is online, and we are currently testing the coverage within the schools and the capacity advertised by the new equipment. New steps including onboarding and configuring and managing the Chromebook devices using the Google Administrative Console. Again, we're on, on track for implementation in January. And this past Tuesday, of note, our, our Director of Information Technology, our own Dean Schlafer, was invited to a reception held at the Governor's Executive Mansion. You may have seen a picture of him with the Governor that has gone viral on the internet, but the event was held in appreciation of efforts put forth by the school division technology leaders in Virginia, helping to better understand what is needed to move Virginia forward in this rapidly changing digital economy. The information provided will assist the Department of Education and their collaborators in supporting divisions in their efforts to decrease technology cost while increasing capabilities. The data will be used to identify options for lowering costs for internet access, increasing bandwidth for school divisions, including bringing in new service options, and incentivizing competition and transparency, and affecting policy changes. Hopefully, the new, um, networking that our Dean Schlafer did with the Governor will result in maybe some increased funds, too. We'll see. Facilities maintenance. IC Norcom boiler is still on track. All connection work is expected to be completed in the next two weeks. Again, that was related to, uh, the boiler that we had to replace, and actually, it ended up being two boilers replaced with three highly efficient boilers. The Churchland PA system, right now, about 50% of the wiring is completed. There is open wiring, they had to do the wiring first, and they're gonna be, after that, replacing the clocks, the speaker boxes, and the call buttons that are in the classrooms once they have all the wiring completed. In the IRC, there's an in-house repair to the Title I mobile that included replacing the threshold, weatherizing the rear entry door and sealing exterior holes, repairing five working in-wall heating units, painting and repairing and staining the handicap deck ramp. And SH Clark and Support Services. Installed were two new concrete walkways from the main parking lot to the building, which will help especially on rainy days that employees don't have to trample through soggy ground. CSEP and SH Clark, all chemical tests were returned negative for the future CSEP location. It's coming from DAC, as previously reported. With the exception of carpet and the bulletin board mastic adhesive, the asbestos areas were minor, and remediation is being scheduled. In Douglas Park, all results from marine chemists pertaining to the teacher's complaint of odor in rooms 23 through 25 have all returned negative, but next we are awaiting additional recommendations from the marine chemist to further identify, if there's other things we can help identify what the, what the problem is. Waters Middle School, until the new lockers are installed, began in-house painting of locker end caps and repairing locker pedestals. Also completed was the replacement of the entire gymnasium light fixtures to HID. All high schools and middle schools gymnasium floors have now been. All high schools and middle schools gymnasium floors have now been completely refinished. And as reported by the Lefco alumni, we are on track for the Playground Mulch Project November 22nd. And that ends my report. Any questions?
Mr. Patel?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Steele, when will the work, when is it scheduled to be completed at Churchland as far as the PA system and the, also the replacement of the emergency buttons in the classrooms?
I'm looking back at Herb Robinson, maybe that's three weeks? Three weeks.
Okay. Are we making any kind of accommodations for teachers who don't have access? If something were to break out in the classroom, they have no way to contact the office now because of the...
Yes, we're, we've been coordinating with Dr. Beckdahl on the alternative communication methods, using walkie-talkies, and she has message runners set up. And so she's working with the maintenance, you know, to, to handle that the best she can with, with things like walkie-talkies.
Okay. And also, the gem at Waters, thank you for updating us on that, but what about Churchland Middle School?
On the gymnasium floors?
On the locker, the lockers and, have that, has that been assessed as of yet?
Well, again, we're doing these kind of interim measures until we award the contract for the lockers. And that was pending final approval by the city council, which is hopefully expected at their next meeting in November. Once we get that funding, then we can move forward with that.
Okay. And I know I also spoke with you earlier in reference to the metal detectors at the schools and make sure they're actually being used?
We've taken a preliminary look at that, and from our records, it shows that all the metal detectors are working, but it may be an issue at the school level on whether they're using them or not. So we're, we'll be checking with the principals on why they may not be using the metal detectors.
Okay.
I, I still need a full report on that, but that's kind of an interim report.
Okay. Because I know I've been to quite a few, and I've only been to about two schools where they actually are on when I go.
Right now, there's no, for instance, work order for any fixing of any metal detector. So either they didn't put in a work order because it's not working, or they, they're not using the metal detector.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. Thank you, Board Member Patel for bringing up the metal detectors. Our schools need to be safe. We need to have an expectation that our buildings and our classrooms are free from as many disruptions that we can have. We have done security grants, we've gone above and beyond to make sure that these metal detectors are there and that they should be being used. It should be the expectation that they are used. And I know groups talked earlier today about duty stations. When I student taught at Craddock Middle, part of my student teaching was doing a duty station at the front door with those metal detectors. I learned early to appreciate safety and precautions being taken as you come in the front door. Whether we do it to every student, which is a little unmanageable at some of our larger ones, whether we do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, there needs to be a system, there needs to be something in place so that we can ensure that our classrooms are safe. SROs are hard to come by in some of these schools. We've got to be preventative. I would rather be proactive rather than reactive when it comes to items that come into the school that should not be there. Number two, CSEP, the move from DAC to Clark. When are we expecting that to happen? Are they still at DAC and they're moving over? What, I know we want to move them to Clark, so when are they going to be at Clark?
The, they're still at DAC. We did some environmental tests because of suspicion of some areas that may have asbestos. All those tests have been completed. There were some minor areas that did have asbestos identified that need to get remediated as we complete the work. There's some renovation work that's needed for CSEP to move in. So we had to identify where that asbestos is, and then we'll, we'll commence the work.
Okay.
We're still waiting, I think, a quote from the marine chemist for remediation. Once we have that and how long it will take, then we can probably draw out the rest of the timeline.
Okay. I was, I was just wondering if we were looking at a January, a semester move, what the preliminary line was? Because I do know we talked about the savings at DAC, and part of that was, well, you know, we, I hate to say we built it into our budget, but we expected those savings from DAC to be in our budget. So I'm just trying to balance both the need for safe and a clean environment and what we had talked about in previous years.
Initially, we were shooting for January. I'm, I'm not sure we can make that now, but hopefully soon after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford, following up on what school board member Patelio, Patelio said about the Churchland Middle School lockers. And I think the last meeting, we sent the resolution to city council for the reappropriation of the funding. Can you give us a target date? Granted, if they do approve it at the next meeting or whatever. Is there a target date that we can let the public know about these lockers? Because we have been talking about them, I know, for a good year. Is there a date that we can expect that they will be put in and completed?
We, we expect to award the contract right after funds are provided by city council. And correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, we were looking at like six weeks or so, six to eight weeks?
Six to eight week lead time.
Okay, six to eight week lead time after...
After the, the money is, is put there. And just a comment or observation, Mr. Steele does not tell anyone about the metal detectors or whatever. That is clearly the job of the superintendent, to make sure the principals are utilizing that equipment. So I just wanted to go on record that we would like to have that done, I'm sure. Thank you.
Next item is 9-2, electronic vote, budget amendment, CTE grant, general fund to grants fund resolution. Mr. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution requesting the council of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, transfer $33,334.62 from the general fund to the grants fund. Whereas the Virginia Department of Education has allocated $16,820 for career and technical education equipment, $13,405 for CTE workplace readiness skills and/or industry certifications, and $3,107 for CTE industry certification exams, licensure tests, and occupational competency assessments, as stated in Superintendent's Memos 18115, 17915, and 18015 respectively. And those are behind the resolution that is in your package. Whereas these allocations were received on a reimbursement basis and are required to be spent before reimbursements can be available under the Perkins Federal Grant. And whereas these allocations are currently included in the general fund, and the city of Portsmouth, Virginia School Board has determined that these allocations should be properly budgeted within the grants fund due to the allocations being received on a reimbursable basis. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Portsmouth City School Board that it hereby requests the Portsmouth City Council transfer $33,334 from the general fund to the grants fund within the instruction category for fiscal year 2015-16. The table is below on the decrease from the general fund, and the next table for the grants fund shows a, the same amount for an increase. The total amount for the appropriation, by the way, is not changing for Portsmouth Public Schools. It's just shifting from general fund to grant fund. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the school board is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the mayor and members of city council, requesting action at the next city council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moving properly second, that we approve the transfer for grants funds. Discussion, Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. This is probably not a question directly from Mr. Steele, but probably Dr. Taylor. Do we know how many industry certifications we are looking to give at the end of this semester?
I don't have that number tonight, but I'm sure that Mr. Hill, Mr. Hill does, because he does do a very good job of keeping, keeping up with the records on that, so I can get that information to you as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
No, I don't need to speak. I know the line.
Okay. Your line was off. Okay. If there are no more requests to speak, then board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to the next area. Thank you, Mr. Steele. Next area is 10, 10.1, electronic vote, school board bylaws and rules of order and procedure. Mr. Parent?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. We've spent a lot of time working on this and making revisions. And in reference to a speaker that came before the board tonight, and the article that was written, Portsmouth School Board Removes Prayers From Its Meeting Routine, we're only talking about one meeting, and that was convocation, where we had a chaplain to come before and offer the, the invocation. But when you're talking about, and it's on page, if you look on page nine of the bylaws that I hope that we adopt tonight, it talks about, we used to have a moment of silent prayer. And the recommendation now is a moment of silence. Now, the definition, as I read, a moment of silence is a period of silent contemplation, silence of prayer, reflection, meditation. Silent prayer and worship, including moments of silent practice during other group activities, have been practiced by Quakers for more than 300 years. Since silence contains no statements or assumptions concerning beliefs and requires no understanding of language to interpret, it's more easily accepted and used than a spoken prayer or an observance when persons of different religious and cultural backgrounds participate together. What I, what I would like to recommend is that instead of a moment of silence, that I see unless the, unless our attorney can find any legal objections of having, make, in other words, go back to what we said, a moment of silent prayer. When you have a moment of silence or a moment of silent prayer, we're standing and, no, we're not, we're not praying, we're not, we've not instituted a prayer that would offend anybody, because it's a moment of silence. There is no discussion whether a person wants to pray to, to whatever person they want to pray to. And as written in the paper, Reverend Patel and I took a stand of that although we're Christians and we do pray, and that we do pray and acknowledge Jesus Christ, when the reporter asks me, well, when I stand before and have a moment of silence, who do I pray to? Well, I pray to God in the name of Jesus Christ. I don't make any apology to that. I'm, I'm a minister. And whether I was a minister or not, I'm still a Christian. But this country was founded on religious liberty, and I don't see that unless the board has some major objection, I would like for the, on page nine, instead of a moment of silence, that it become, go back to what we call it, a moment of silent prayer. That isn't offensive to anyone? There was an article that was done a year ago, and I'm not sure if Ms. Newsom, you did it or someone did it. But the basic headline was that if you want to go to heaven, you need to live in Portsmouth, because Portsmouth has more churches per, per, per square foot than any city in the, in the surrounding area. So I don't think that anybody in the city of Portsmouth, we had one person to come before this board. I've been on this board now, this is my fifth year, and I've never had anybody to come and object to whether we had a moment of silence or a moment of silent prayer. No one, I don't think you'll, this community, knowing this community and being a, a community of, of faith, would have any objections to this board having a moment of silent prayer. Now, when we stand, that's between whatever we say and whoever we pray to, that's between ourselves and whomever we're, we're praying to. Now, I did, I did want to mention that since the city council, and I realize the city council is a governing body, and that we are a public, having a public meeting, that if they can invoke and have ministers of various faiths come before city council and offer a prayer, that I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we can't. And I know that last year when I attended the VSBA conference, there was a whole section, session that I attended on this very topic that we're talking about. When I ran for office, I ran that I was going to, instruction, of course, is our number one priority. But I didn't leave my faith or my, my religious beliefs at the door. I know that instruction and all the reports we heard tonight, they're very worthwhile, and we, we've addressed it. When you look at the second item on any agenda that we have, it says a moment of silent prayer or a moment of silence. Now, this headline says Portsmouth School Board Removes Prayers From Its Meetings. We're not removing prayers from my meetings because we never had them. The only, the only time that anybody has objected, objected to is that, at convocation. We're not even sure if Dr. Bracy's going to have another convocation. If we have another convocation, there may be a whole, a whole different, well, whether it be an invocation or whether it be a moment of silent prayer, you know. I think this country has become a country of, of trying to be politically correct to the extreme that we don't stand for anything anymore. And that bothers me. And so I would like, I would like on page nine, and of course, the board has the final decision, instead of a moment of silence, that that be changed back to a moment of silent prayer. On page 11, 2.5b, "The chairman shall maintain the dignity of the meeting, preserve decorum and order, and shall rule out of order any person violating the rules of order and procedure, rules described in Robert Rules of Order." I would put a period at the end of order and leave or legal states. When we were going through this, I think we took it out and it ended up staying in. So I would put a period after Robert Rules of Order. And on page 13, 3-4, Retreat Items, Item Agendas, Members Should Submit to the, and to keep paragraph one or sentence number one and sentence number two parallel, it is the chairman and the superintendent. This has the superintendent and chairman, and the second sentence has the chairman and superintendent. So I went on page 13, making consistent, and say Members Shall Submit to the Chairman and Superintendent at least two weeks in advance. Those are my, those are my recommended changes that I would like to make to the board on page nine and those other two pages. Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. I, I too agree with Mr. Parent. The young lady that came to speak before us, she spoke about the convocation.
Right.
That the chaplain prayed in the name of Jesus Christ.
Correct.
It had nothing to do with us opening our meeting with a moment of silent prayer.
Right.
So I'm not sure how that was taken completely out of context, because I think we're one of the few boards that open with a moment of silent prayer. Some of them still have ministers to come in and pray, which I have no problem with that. But the fact that we had one teacher out of 2,000 to come, and certainly her point was well-taken, and that was... was well taken, and that was the reason we said that we would not invite anyone else in to pray for a big training or convocation, but just observe a moment of silent prayer. And you pray to whomever you want.
Right.
And so I find it kind of offensive that we cannot use the word prayer. I mean, you know, you pray to whomever you want, whether it's the sun, moon, God, Allah, or whomever, but it's still my moment of silent prayer.
Right.
So I don't think that, and I don't think that was the intention originally. It was really the big meeting where we had a guest chaplain in, and he prayed to Jesus Christ.
Right.
And we were trying to make everyone comfortable. But at the same time, the majority of the citizens of Portsmouth did not complain. We had one person that we are trying to accommodate.
Reverend Patillo?
Well, thank you Chairman. I'm trying to figure out how to address this. This is probably the most difficult topic I've dealt with, to be on the board. Mainly because I'm a pastor full-time, and I am a Christian, and a firm believer in Jesus Christ. But I do also recognize that when I was elected and took my oath to be nonpartial when making decisions such as this, and I, no matter how we go, it's a moment of silence, silent prayer, I'm cool either way. But I just want to make sure that we recognize that we can't be so quick to say that we're not offending anyone when we do say that, because there may be one, two, three in our school division who don't believe in prayer at all. And I also, I respect their belief systems as well. I don't need a moment to pray, I pray most of the time when y'all talking up here. But I just want to make sure that when we make our decision, that we're keeping that in mind, and that we just realize that there are those, and to make sure that our opinion would be the same if there was someone praying in the name of Allah, or Buddha, or Confucius, but we still have this same strong, you know, urge to change or not change. And just make sure we recognize that there are those who have different beliefs, and we should honor those just the same. But either way we go, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Dr. Wilkerson?
Yeah, just a comment that as a public body, I agree with Reverend Patillo, that we can't give preference to any particular deity as such. And so my question is, well, for those who may be atheists, if you insert prayer, there is an assumption that you are, in a sense, praying to some deity. And so does that become an issue as a board, as a public board?
Okay, everyone finished? I didn't know I would start something by taking the word prayer off. I'm the one that's guilty of this, that took the word prayer off to try to find a way to, I call it offend as least amount of people as possible in public, because this is education, this is, you're dealing with your children, and that was my first perspective. Now, I'm gonna tell you this like it is. I agree with you Reverend Patillo, I'm not a preacher. I believe in each individual handling everything their own way, Dr. Wilkerson. I am a firm believer that if you leave the word prayer in there, when you say that, it could be reflection, and this is, Dr. Bracy and I talked about this, because it could be reflections. I mean, there's a multitude of words that you can use. And, you know, myself personally, you know, the word prayer doesn't, it doesn't offend me. If it offends you, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to look at how we deal, trying to deal with the public when I came up with this. So my thought was, okay, if we just use a moment of silence, okay, prayer's not in there, but you can use the moment of silence for prayer, reflection, whatever your word is that you want to use, you use it. But it's not there on the paper suggesting from the public body that you pray. And that was my thought when I did this. It's not a suggestion by putting the word there, because by the same token, we could put the words prayer, reflection, or whatever other words we want to make up with that.
Right.
So I have a slight problem, and since this has come up, I really thought hard about it, you know, how to do this and not offend one segment. I'm not really, yes, I am too, because we're dealing with the children, this is the bottom line of the children on this.
Right.
So that's how I came up with dropping the word prayer. So it's not suggestive that we've got a captured audience, and that's what we're trying to say.
That's what I was saying, prayer assumes that there is a deity.
Yeah.
And you have some who may be offended.
So that is why I did it like that, and Dr. Bracy and I both, because he's got it, he's trying to deal with the staff and the children how to handle it. And I'm just trying to get it through so it'll be, you know, I don't want to say acceptable, because, you know, prayer to me is acceptable, I don't care how you do it.
Exactly.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I think your point is well taken. We certainly can vote our convictions, and either way it's fine, but certainly, I have no problem with prayer.
Yeah. Personally, I would like to leave the word off, so there's no suggestion there in writing, and I understand where you're coming from.
That's fine.
So.
And I wish I had known about this earlier, Mr. Parent, because I didn't even know this was coming. And no changes have been made, the last changes I had were the final changes, and then this came up.
Right.
Just now.
Well, I thought this was the right, since the article came out in the paper, this was going to be, we were voting on.
Yeah, but we were the ones that worked on this together, so I didn't know you were coming up with that.
Right.
My last comment about it, the article came out in the paper as if the board had decided.
Yeah.
Right, and we.
I did not know anything about it.
Right.
The only thing that we had discussed was changing for the big meetings, the convocations or whatever. It had nothing to do with opening up our meeting. So, you know, when I read it, of course, I was a little taken aback, because I didn't know how the board made that decision, and the board members did not know. But, you know, I've stated my piece with it, I'm fine. Either way, I will vote my conviction on it. I'm okay.
Well, the question, well, the question is now, he wants to change it to prayer. And if I vote against it, I'm voting against prayer. And I'm not. I prefer that you leave the word off, so it's not even, no one can use it as a suggestion, because it, to me, silence indicates reflection, prayer, whatever you, the individual wants to do. So, I mean, we can delay the vote until the next meeting, remove it, and discuss it some more, but I want, I don't want this to become a conflict in the news, because I know it ain't, it is. It's already a conflict now, and we're discussing it.
Yes.
And it's going to be viewed as that by the public when it's not. Well, I'm not gonna say it's not, but, you know, like you say, you can accept it either way. I would prefer to stop, don't even use a suggestion, so it can be used against us personally. But that's just my feeling on it. And, did you still want to say something, Ms. Williams?
Okay, Mr. Parent, you say? Well, you know, we've worked on this, and it's, we have reviewed it, and reviewed it, and tweaked it, and tweaked it, tweaked it. I don't see the point in not being able, because it's on the agenda for us to vote on it. I, you know, as Ms. Williams said, we have to vote our convictions, and we're going to be looking on page nine, on page 11, which is really, you know, we're just correcting something that shouldn't have been there anyway.
Yeah, those, the other two items, you're right, those got in there and never got taken out.
This goes against, this goes against my personal beliefs, but I think having a moment of silence, I can do whatever I want in that minute or two minutes. And if that, once again, we are being politically correct, ask not to offend anyone. I have a problem with that, but I don't want to, I don't want to offend anyone. And I will go, I will take the, you know, I will withdraw the moment of silent prayer and ask the board on page nine to keep it as a moment of silence. That goes against what I really believe, but I think that we just, we need to, we need to get our bylaws passed, move forward, and when we have a moment of silence, what I do in public, what I do for myself, that's between me and my board. And I'm not offending any of you, because you don't know what I'm, you don't know what I'm praying in, and, well, I guess you do by now. I guess you know who I'm praying to, but the bottom line is that we need to move forward with these bylaws. And so let's just say a moment of silence. And for clarification, Ms. Newsom, it means for me, I'm praying, I really mean it to be a moment of silent prayer, but that's my preference. I have to deal with other board members, and I think that we've heard from other board members, and I think, and I didn't mean, Mr. Chairman, to.
No, no problem. No, you know me, because I'm a speaker.
Yeah, you and I both, yeah.
And there's no hardship.
To go ahead, and on page nine, keep it at moment of silence, and then on the other two pages that are just removed, and put a period at the, in the order, and on page 13, reverse it, chairman and superintendent, and let's go ahead. I move for approval of the bylaws as amended.
Second?
Moving properly, second, that we approve the bylaws as amended with the two changes. End of the further discussion. If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 10.2, electronic vote, approval of policies from V S B A Policy Services. Dr. Bracy, do you have that?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, this is what Mr. Wiggins shared last month for discussion, that the committee reviewed, and he shared with you, so unless there were any other questions.
That's Ms. Hines, isn't it?
Yes, Ms. Hines is part of that, and Reverend Flynn.
Okay, I apologize, Ms. Hines, I should have called on you instead of Dr. Bracy.
I was gonna let Dr. Bracy handle it.
No, I'm gonna put it over there with all of you on your committee. Go ahead, Ms. Hines.
As Mr. Wiggins talked about at the last meeting, most of these are cosmetic in nature with updates to the code, updating the law references at the bottom of them. There's nothing that's earth-shattering or core-shaking in these, it's just cosmetic to make sure that our policies are in line with state code and law updates.
Okay, all right, thank you. Boys' pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second?
Moving properly, second, that we adopt the V S B A Policy Services policies as approved, as given in the discussion. If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Month's report, Superintendent Dr. Eli Bracy III. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Bridgeford. The first thing that I want to share is not really part of my report, it's something that Mr. Steele shared, that evidently, I think it glossed over us, because it went so quick. But if you remember, the first thing he said was that the division received the distinguished budget presentation award, and we did not stop and congratulate our finance team for the work they did to receive that.
And I'm glad you went back over that, because the city got one also this year. And my question, do you remember if they've gotten one before, or was this their first one?
They've gotten one.
They've gotten?
This is our second one.
Okay, this is our second one? Okay, thank you. That's prestigious award.
Yes. And the first item I have is the, I had the opportunity to see the swim gym program that the Portsmouth YMCA on High Street provides to our second graders, and it's done through a grant between the Portsmouth General Hospital Foundation and the Beasley Foundation. The day that I went out there, the second graders, and this is for all the second graders in our, in our school division, they all have an opportunity to spend at least five days at the Y, getting the water safety, and part of that, they also get about 25 minutes or so in the gym for free play and activity. And just to see the students in the water, some of them, this is their first time actually being in the water, you just see the look on their faces, and of course, some know how to swim, but what I learned from that, one of the parents shared with one of the coordinators of the program, is that her child accidentally fell into a pool. So the basic skills that they learned for those five days, they were able to do the little strokes to get to the, to get to something where they could hold on to, and that was truly a testament of what that program is. You know, in hearing that, you wish that there were ways that you could actually extend it, but at least we do have that through the generous generosity of those foundations to be able to provide that. And with that, the foundation, the personnel, they were there also, so they wanted us to make sure that we looked at that and see if that was something that we could definitely continue. Now, this started some years ago, and we're coming up on where some of those students, when they were second graders, are now at the point where they of age where they can actually be lifeguards. So they want to now come back and be able to be a lifeguard at the Y where they got their first experience in the water. So, you know, just seeing it come full circle, so that's one of the great programs that we want to make sure that we, make sure that the public is aware of. Secondly, the, I was invited by the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce to be recognized with several other community leaders as they had a welcome breakfast for new CEOs. Chairman Bridgeford and Vice Chairman Parent joined me at that presentation at the Founders Inn Spa in Virginia Beach, and I definitely want to thank them for attending, and the other board members who expressed that they couldn't attend, but they congratulated me as well. In our endeavor to enable elementary students to participate in meaningful activities, we've arranged for two events for them. Our third and fourth graders will attend the Virginia Symphony Young People's Concert Schedule for the 18th and 19th of this month at 9:30 in the auditorium at I C Norcom. Our second graders will attend the Tide Water Winds Harmony Holiday Concert planned for December 17th, and that will be at Willett Hall at 10:00 a.m. And just to let you know, all administrative offices will be closed November 26 through 27 in observant of our Thanksgiving holiday, and, excuse me.
He's got his fingers up.
Okay. Mr. Wiggins is always gonna keep me on point. But to finish it, we'll be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday, and the one that I skipped over was the distinguished alumnus award luncheon is scheduled for December 2nd at 11:30 at the Renaissance. The event is being sponsored by the Portsmouth School Foundation, and we will honor Carol and Gloria Creasy, both products of Woodrow Wilson High School and recipients of the city's 2013 First Citizen Award. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bracy. Okay, board members, comments and concerns? Do we have any comments or concerns from board members? Reverend Patillo?
Thank you, sir. I would like to ask, if possible, Dr. Bracy, I know some years ago, in the schools, we used to have police officers that would come in, and they would do gang awareness and prevention with the teachers and staff. If we could possibly have that reinstituted within the schools, from our knowledge, they haven't been doing it the last couple of years. And I think it would be important for our teachers to know when they see certain clothing or tattoos and things of that sort, so they can have an understanding of what's going on in their surroundings when it comes to gang prevention and gang awareness. Also, when it comes to safety, again, just want to reiterate, the important. importance of using the metal detectors to make sure that's done. And also, from a financial standpoint, hearing all the concerns and the requests from different groups tonight, I just want to personally say, I'm sure many of the board feel the same way, that we recognize the hard work and dedication that they give to our students every single day. We're also realizing that our city is facing a shortfall, and it may be not impossible, but it'd be difficult for, to say that we may, we would get level funding again for the next school year. And also on top of that, there are a lot of things that we do behind the scenes that's not always promoted and put out there, such as the contributions we make to V R S for long-term retirement and things of that sort also, that we're also responsible for doing on a yearly basis. So just be patient with us, and I'm sure that we'll be open with communication with you all, which is no, we're fighting an uphill battle as far as finances coming down from the state and from the city for next year. Also with that, I've asked Mr. Steele before in the finance committee meetings, that he also provides us with a budget process and timeline as far as how the budget's gonna be put together for the next year, so we can make sure that teachers and building-level administrators are getting their worrying as far as how they think, what they think their needs are on a school level and not just coming from the top down. And I think that would help us address some of the needs that we do have, and how our spending is done throughout the year also. Other than that, I want to say I've been visiting schools, and they're doing a great job. The teachers are working hard, the students are working hard. And I will say, every school I've gone to, I've had to get buzzed in or use my badge. All the doors are always locked when I go. So that part of our safety is assured and is being done. Just make sure that we have those metal detectors working and getting that P A system fixed in Churchland, and I think we'll be, you know, top-notch as far as our safety is concerned with our students. Thank you.
Dr. Bracy?
Okay. Reverend Patillo, to add something to the concern that you had about the, the gang awareness and the metal detectors, another proactive measure that we're looking into, I just want to make everybody aware of, is that in addition to school resource officers, S R Os, we also have our own security officers. So we're also looking at the, we're doing a feasibility study, because we need to also have them in uniform as well, our security officers, so they can be easily identified as who they are. Right now, they sort of look like plainclothes, detectives as such. So we're looking at uniforms. I understand years, years back, they did have uniforms, but I think they need to be identifiable in the building so that everyone will know who they are in the event the need arises. So we're looking into that, and that may be something we may be able to do this year once we look and see the amount of funding that will take to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, Chairman Briceford, I just want to say that next week, I believe, the majority of us, if not all of us, will be at the Virginia School Board Association in Williamsburg, and that's usually a great time of networking and learning what other school divisions do, because they come from all over the state. And I think it's Wednesday through Friday, so we'll be, we'll be up there. And we don't meet again until December, right?
I think it's December the 3rd.
Right, wonderful.
I think.
Yeah. But, but I just wanted to say to the staff and the teachers and principals, that I know they have a difficult job. A lot of the things that we read, you know, in the paper, the negative things, we never hear about the positives. And I've visited some of the schools, I've sat in on some of Dr. Anita Taylor's school improvement meetings, and the principals come in and they share, and they really are working hard, and you can tell they're committed, because they really have a stake in it, because it's just, the pressure's really on, on, on the principals to perform, to do those, get those S O Ls where they need to be. So I want to thank Dr. Bracy and Dr. Anita Taylor and her staff for really working hard to make our school system better. So I didn't want to leave. It's Thanksgiving, and I want to give you thanks for all that you do.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chairman Briceford. I've been scribbling notes, and I want to piggyback on what Board Member Williams had to say as far as thank you. Being in education myself, it's now November, the adrenaline has worn off, and we are now in the long haul. You don't always hear thanks enough, so to those people who came and stood tonight and talked, that is your civic duty, and that's your civic responsibility to be engaged and to be informed and to make contact, because we do make decisions that impact your daily life, whether we like it or not, with what we do as far as budget and what we do as policy. So thank you for giving us your voice, and thank you for being engaged with us. A couple of things from tonight, we have talked about duty-free lunches for elementary schools, and that those things are in place for that to happen. Being a secondary teacher and having 90-minute planning times, I know how often sometimes teachers get pulled to cover during their planning times as well. So as, we wanted duty-free lunches for elementary. I'm gonna ask that we protect and that we make sure we're not pulling too much planning time from our secondary folk, that they are getting on average, you know, because I know we can't give them an everyday bit, but that we're protecting their planning time as well, because even though 90 minutes seems like a long time when you teach and work with 120 to 150 kids in your classes, that 90 minutes goes by in a flash. So I want to make sure that we're protecting that time as well. Also had a question, I've had a couple of parents and a couple of teachers ask me about book bags for middle schools. At Craddock Middle, we have clear mesh bags for our students, that are book bags that go there. That's not a requirement at any of the other schools. A couple of the other middle schools, Waters or Churchland, they're not allowed to use their, the lockers. So students are carrying around everything in book bags. Once again, and I'm gonna go back to the metal detectors, at those other two schools, those bags are not clear or not mesh. And if we have no way to know what's in those book bags, and we're not using our metal detectors, I really don't think that we're being protective and proactive rather than reactive with our students. So we need to make sure that that's going on. Because I was at a civic summit today, and because we do want to engage civic activity with our youngsters, we do have S C A bodies at our high schools and our middle schools as well, maybe. I would also like to invite S C A presidents, vice presidents, their bodies to connect with the board. What, from the student's point of view, if we're being inclusive in what it is that we're doing, let's hear from some students and what it is that they need. It may be bathroom paper towels are never there. It may be the fact that we've got two doors broken in bathrooms that we don't know about, but these are the students' perspectives. And if this is a school system, and we want to engage our students to be active members of the community and be civically responsible, then we can start by giving them an opportunity to talk with us and engage with us. So that may be something that we talk about and we work on as we go forward, but getting those students in and hearing what it is that they have to say, since what we do every day and what the decisions that we make impact their every day as well. So with that, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Parent?
Yes, I echo what everybody says, and want to say to the staff how much we appreciate all the work that you do. We did, some of us did attend the Starbase Atlantis Celebration, and I want to compliment the staff, and very proud of that, of that program. You know, there are things that, I did go to one of the school improvement meetings, and very, you know, I don't think people realize how much pressure the principals are really under. When you look at, and I'm still coming out to look at Indistar, how detailed and how very specific, and how it's monitored, not only by the state looking at the reports, but also the superintendent and Dr. Taylor and, and some of the other coordinators are looking at it. There's a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into it, a lot of time. And I want us to always remember that, you know, when we look at SMART GOs, and when teachers write SMART GOs, and when we write our, our lesson plans, and when we do our school improvement plans, that they are seamless as possible, because main thing we're about is that we want to see those, those scores. We want all of our schools to be fully accredited. And there was once upon a time when all of our schools were accredited. And Dr. Bracy, I want to see you dance on the stage when all of our schools are fully accredited. You can do whatever dance you want, but one day, I know that all of our schools, you and Dr. Taylor can get up and do a dance, that all of our schools will, will be accredited. And I know with the hard work that's been going on, that it'll happen. So, thank you very much, and that's all I have tonight.
Okay. I don't see any other requests to speak. I think it's all been said. The only thing I'm gonna add is, when we got the accreditation, I say the hardest thing it's gonna be is to maintain it.
Amen.
And so we gotta get back there, but the hardest thing is gonna be to maintain it. I wish all of you all a happy holiday early for Thanksgiving. Enjoy yourselves. Rest yourselves over the three or four days you have. Come back refreshed for a short week, a couple of weeks of work, and be ready to go for the Christmas holidays and celebrate them. Until then, unless there's any other business coming for this board, this meeting is adjourned.